Happy New Year. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held this Saturday, January 4th, at 8:30 a.m., and we will be here all day in the board meeting room. With that, I'm going to quickly hand it over to Dr. Adley.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year to you. It's nice to see you after the break. It's with a little bit of mixed emotions this evening that I have to share that I'm excited to share, and I'm not so excited to share. You notice that Dr. De Silva is not with us this evening. Dr. De Silva has literally moments ago been appointed the new superintendent of the Ridgefield Public Schools. Now, she's not here, but I'm just going to give her a wee round of applause anyway. Just right. As many of you know, Dr. De Silva's been here for close to five years, and I think you all know her better than I do in many ways, and she's an exceptional school administrator and assistant superintendent, and she is more than ready for the challenges of the superintendency, and she'll be a terrific job up in Ridgefield. I know that one of the things I said when I got here is the people that are here, and Suzie is very much a part of that group, and there's something that's a real strong system that's in place in this district. One of the systems is the curriculum, and I know that's a testament to Suzie's work. She works tirelessly every day to try and make sure that every kid in this district is well-served and has a quality education. Perhaps she's just run out of, if I may say, maybe orientating new superintendents, but I professionally and personally have really greatly appreciated her support, her counsel along the way, as in many ways she's orientated me to the district, so for that I will always be grateful. I will have the opportunity, fortunately, to stay in very close contact with Suzie because she'll be in the superintendent area group. So you understand the mixed emotions that I have this evening, but we congratulate her, and I look forward to hearing many successful stories along the way.
So I'll just echo that. I had a chance to talk with Dr. De Silva, and it's certainly with regret that we let her go, but we're also so incredibly proud of the work she's done here in the district in the last five years, and much of that, you know, certainly made her ready for the next step. She was uncharacteristically Suzie emotional in that she wanted to make sure the board and the public knew that Darien has the best teachers, and she will miss working with them, but she believes that the district is in good hands with Dr. Adley. She believes that this is the next step for her, and she believes that our teaching staff is top-notch, and that anyone who steps into her role will inherit a great team. So it's with mixed emotions that we say goodbye to her, but it is certainly with the best of intentions and emotions that we wish her good luck in her next endeavor. So, next time you see her, tell her thank you and good luck. We certainly will.
You may be wondering when the transition's happening, as April 1st is her start date. I also won't lose her in the morning because she and I talk regularly at 5:30, 5:45 in the morning, so anyway, we look forward to seeing her and congratulating her in person.
Great, and with that, we will move on to the budget, for which she'll still be with us.
So I'm excited to present the budget this evening, just to kick us off a little bit. Richard Rule, Richard is going to sort of walk us through the format of the budget, and most of yous are probably familiar with it, but for those of you who are not, it doesn't do any harm to have a wee refresher on the way the book is put together. I want to say, first of all, before Rich gets up and running, I want to thank Richard, particularly this year, for working so closely with me and the other members of the cabinet, Marge, Shirley, and Suzie, for all their hard work in putting the budget together and their assistance in putting it together, and Nadine, because Nadine's another right-hand and Nadine has done a tremendous job working with me. Our principals, as you know, are an integral part of the process, as are our RC department chairs, and indeed, all the staff, because they contribute to the meetings and so on and so forth. So with that, I give them my appreciation, and Richard, if you'd just sort of walk us through the format a little bit, please.
So as in previous years, it is a modified zero-based budget. We do a method of budgeting in which all expenditures have been based on zero, and then increases has to be justified as to why they're being requested. We won't go through all of them, but there are acronyms in the budget, including obviously BOE for Board of Ed, RTM for Representative Town Meeting, BOF for Board of Finance, RC for Responsibility Center, ECS for Educational Cost Sharing, and Access Cost EC. The budget is presented today, early January. It is recommended for approval in early February and then adopted by the RTM in May. The budget process does start relatively early, in early October. We wrap it up about mid-December and then send it to the printer shortly before the winter break. The presentation, again, starts today, January 2nd. We have our all-day budget review on Saturday, January 4th, another Board of Ed meeting on the 14th, another meeting on the 21st, a public hearing on February 4th, and then Board of Ed approval on February 11th. Board of Finance review in early March. We do do a tour of the schools in mid-March, March 14th, a Board of Finance work session on March 24th, Board of Finance votes on April 14th, and then the RTM votes on May 11th. The budget book is divided into sections, so there's a superintendence message, district goals and objectives, enrollment projections, personnel. The yellow tabs are the Responsibility Centers or the RCs, detailed by objects, detailed grants and food services, and then capital. We do have an enrollment section that breaks down the elementary, middle, and high school enrollment, as well as class sizes. Again, the yellow tabs are cost centers or RCs, the schools, and then the different departments. The budget book has three years of historical actuals, your current year information, which includes your adopted budget, any transfers or adjustments that get you to your revised budget, year-to-date expenditures through the end of November, our forecasts, our current staff, and then the recommended budget, and then the variance is recommended to revised budget. Personnel section, you'll see each section is divided up similar to our financial reports in personnel, operating, fixed, and equipment. If the current staff will be shown under current staff, if there were proposed staffing changes, both positive and negative, you would see those changes in proposed staff.
Anyone on the board have questions regarding that?
Okay. Thank you. So tonight's presentation, my assistant was out today, so probably just post it first thing in the morning if you just bear with me, but it'll be available online just first thing tomorrow morning. So again, a budget is a sort of a time for celebration also, so let me just say that I'm absolutely very, very proud this evening to be able to present the administrative budget to the Board of Education and in many ways to the town. I'm just delighted to be here, and it's been a wonderful experience for me thus far, and again, just many thanks to my colleagues for assisting along the way. So with that, I'll go through it pretty quickly. I know that there's an opportunity for questions, and we have all-day Saturday and so on and so forth, so here we go. So one of the things that coming into the district that was very clear is the decisions are made for all students, and this is where it starts for our students, for all our students, for the brightest of the brightest, for the leaders of tomorrow, and for every kid who walks through the schoolhouse door. Our charge is to prepare them for an exciting future ahead of them. To do that, this budget, I have to say that it's been a challenging budget. It's not the budget I would have liked to have, like, all honestly just right out the door with some of the challenges that you will see unfold here. But what remains for us for the future is what this quote says, because we always have to sort of redesign ourselves and to create that healthy tension in order to move forward and to be creative and innovative in that particular process. I'm proud that this budget maintains the level of excellence you would expect, we would all expect, for the Darien Public Schools. It builds the capacity of our staffs and honors the quality of the staff. It maintains class sizes and protects class sizes. Along the way, there have been some difficult choices that we've had to make, but we'll point those out as we go. I'm not going to read every one of these. If you've been following the Board of Education goals, as you can see, there's 18 of them. That's quite a few, and I've taken some liberties, literacy liberties of this, and have sort of abbreviated them, but the only reason I, well, the reason I put them up there is because it has influenced the administrators' thinking along the way, because some of these goals are not just this year, their goals are for future years. So a wee bit of perspective, I just thought I would go back and look, certainly as someone new, by the way, if you have these here, you can put them on. Thank you for bringing them this evening.
Mr. Davis went to the spot.
Jack, thank you. So just for a little bit of perspective, now this is a sort of two-edged sword to some degree, because living within your means of being able to get a return sum to the town that will help the Madeline for the future years, in some ways could be received as, are you over-budgeting? Bear in mind, this is a little under a 1% variation, right, on a $100 million budget, but this was helpful for me just to give a little bit of perspective as to how the budgets have ended up each year and what we have returned to the town. And again, I know that there's some, there can be some discussion about that, whether that's a good thing or whether it's a question of whether you're budgeting correctly. I would argue that with under 1% on such a large budget, that it is good budgeting, but anyway, just for a wee bit of perspective. I also went and just looked at, we just did the five-year, not so long ago, the five-year projection, so I did a wee analysis just of historically, what were the five-year projections and what did the budgets actually come in at? And it doesn't need many more analysis other than you looking at it, I'm not going to read the whole thing. And we come in at 3.63 for the first year of the five-year budget review, and you'll see we come in a little bit lower than that this time around. As you know, there's a cost per student, for every student that goes to school, and all the districts, there's a cost per student that is calculated by the State Department of Education. You can see Darien, which is $21,930, and it says FY '18 because that's the only published list that we have, the sort of the traditionally worked behind schedule for two years. So what you have there is essentially on the right-hand side, you'll see that if, based on our enrollment, so next year we're going to have 4,622 kids, so if you were in Westport Pen, their per pupil expenditure, you would have half a million dollars more in expenses. Similarly, if you were in New Canaan, you would have 1.4 less. Now, you could ask the question, well, what can we do as well as Ridgefield, like $11 million less? And then, of course, you go to the other extreme for Redding with $10 million more. So for the most part, we're right in the middle of that range, but it just gives you a wee sense of the differential between the cost per pupil and what it can actually materialize into, and actually, you can then extrapolate this, what that would mean in Texas for the particular towns. So it is an opportunity to, I didn't list everything, but it's been a delight, I've had a delight and a pleasure in going around the district and learning all the good things that are happening and celebrating the good things that are happening around the district, but I don't need to tell you that you're getting an excellent return on investment in the school system, from the middle school kids on the Quiz Bowl to the high schools named number-one high school in the state. Newsweek recently named it one of the top 100 schools in the nation for STEM. The art is just absolutely fabulous. Kids in this school system can be good at whatever they want to be good at, and that's a wonderful thing to say, and this budget actually protects those things. Congratulations to our two-state championship teams, I hope I didn't miss any, I think I got the hockey and the girls in there, the drama, from the tests and scores to the STEM that has been conducted around the district, Code Week, STEM activities, in-focused mathematics, the Singapore Math, SAT scores, AP scores, responsive classroom, and the commitment to social and emotional learning. This district is firing on all cylinders and getting a tremendous return on investment. I just included this just as a wee graph for a return on investment. So what this basically shows you, on the left-hand side is the average SAT, math and science, math and language arts combined, so if you combine the scores. On the horizontal axis is the expenditure, which I just shared what, how much that is, about $21,000 for Darien. So if you look at that, Darien's right in that where the axes cross, that green dot, so to speak, and basically, if you look at the top-left quadrant, the top-left quadrant, there's nobody in there, which basically means says to you, nobody gets higher scores, no district in the state gets higher scores and pays less money. That's a pretty good place to be, generally. Generally, that's a good, pretty good place to be. You're getting a good return on your investment, our taxpayers are getting that investment in return. Not everything is, as we know, is test scores, right? The quality of the program and the diversity of the program, and all those things contribute to a quality education, but it does give you just a little bit of a snapshot. If you're wondering why there's a lot of axes down at the bottom of the horizontal axes, some districts don't have, you know, 11th and 12th graders and don't test, but they still cost money. So this is our enrollment for next year, and you'll see that we'll be reduced by 34 students, and the board has received this information, it's actually in your packets, this is literally a summary of it. So the decline is basically eight at the elementary and 26 students between the middle school and the high school. Five years out, the elementary and the middle school sort of remain stable, and the high school begins to decline. If you look at the whole 10 years out, there's a decline of 3%, 148%, so if you look historically, you're going through these cycles, what goes around tends to come around a little bit, but I'm not depending on a mass exodus by any means from this district, I don't believe that that's going to happen, and I don't see the pattern for that to happen. So with the challenges of this year's budget, I have to say that one of the things that we tried to do is to protect class sizes. So you'll notice that in some cases, you have like in Tokenique, kindergarten, 16 to 17 students. If it goes to another section, it just gets too big, right? So we've had to roll a couple of sections over. Overall, we've added one personnel, one teacher, so if you net all the changes from this year to next year, if you net all those changes, there's one additional teacher for enrollment, and that is at Tokenique.
That's this year, that's, this is the 2021 year.
Yes, it's the 2021 year, yes.
Thank you.
So there'll be one, there'll be one extra section for, you'll see in Tokenique. I've put out the elementary class sizes just for your review, whenever you want to look under that under consideration, but you can see the class sizes are listed there, the sections are listed, enrollment's listed. So ultimately, this is the, this is the bottom line of the budget, right? It's a 3.46 budget, and actually, getting there was extremely difficult. We've had to reduce some positions and perhaps have to do some things that for some time we maybe have not had to do. What we've tried to do is come in at a reasonable increase while absolutely protecting and maintaining the quality of the services that we would all expect. I don't think I need to tell you that the organization is personnel-based and heavily personnel-based, that the personnel and the health benefits are basically, make up 75% of our annual budget. So salaries, this is the increase of the salaries. Many of the teachers have, you know, we've just had the teachers contract, for those who are following that, that may have seemed to be a little, you may be expecting that number to be a little bit higher, but we have workload and turnover and student, teachers who are actually paid out of grants, so it's slightly less than the actual contract would So the total salaries is 1.28, which is just over, obviously just over a percent. Here's the personnel summary. So FTEs are full-time equivalent, just like two teachers, two staff members, right, or parts thereof. So you've got minus 2.09 comes from the teacher contract efficiencies. You may or may not know that within that contract, our teachers agreed, in some cases, to teach additional classes, fifth class. These are savings that we can realize, so you can imagine there's some teachers who are teaching additional class, are not going to have to do it, but are not going to get paid the extra money, essentially, that's what that is. .44 of the FTEs from the teacher contract is from the middle school, and 1.65, sorry, 1.65 is from the middle school, and .44 is from the high school. The other FTEs are personnel reductions that we've had to make, and I'll walk you through what those are. So this is the ultimate summary of the personnel changes. So overall, it was a minus nearly eight positions. So there you see the one elementary teacher at Tokenique, the .44 and the 1.65 that I just discussed, .8 P teacher which is shared across the elementary schools. That position will no longer be in place for next year, we feel we can accommodate that well with class sizes. At the high school, there is a math-science secretary, I don't know if you know that. Unfortunately, it's a split position, it's a half-time that serves the math department and a half-time serves the science department. That position will be eliminated, as will the position for music that serves half-time music and half-time for the nurse's office. That will leave us with one secretary and some other reorganization to serve the department, so there is one secretary there that will be at the disposal of the math, science, and the music, that's a lot to cover, I admit that, that's a lot to cover. We'll also try to provide additional assistance at the schools and potentially here at the central services. Negative one, FTE reading paraprofessional at the high school, given what that position actually entails, the number of students who are in the classes, that are in the classes, we feel if we can make that accommodation. And then, we've got minus two, special education paraprofessionals. I can assure you that there's no shell game going on here, because you can, it can sometimes happen where people might think, well, you could just put the paraprofessionals back in again, right, being a part of an IP or otherwise. Well, we've gone through the IPs to make sure for next year that our services that we can provide without the two paraprofessionals. So that's the, that's the high level of the personnel. So this is kind of where it gets, this is where it gets really, really challenging. We have health rate increase at 8.5 that we have budgeted. We are provided health care through Connecticut Care. I mean, I'm nearly a wee bit embarrassed, and embarrassed not the wrong word, but it's nearly like inflammatory, right, to put down a 34% increase in health care. That is what we were faced with through Connecticut Care, based on the claims of the past year. And that's just not going to fly, like, it's not going to fly with anybody, right? So we have a wee bit of thinking to do, so how did we come up with the 8.5, in all honesty? Since we had to put something in for health care, we put in the cost that it would cost us to participate in the state plan. Why did we do that? Well, otherwise, I'm just rolling the dice, right? At least we know we can get into, should we want to get into the state plan, we could get into the state plan. I'm not saying, nor am I convinced it's the right decision to do that, but we had to put something in with some logic behind it. Simultaneously, we've been working with surrounding districts, and Rich has been working with our consultants. Anthem is willing to come to the table with a pool and a consortium, and the latest information, I think that they feel as if they can get is at least seven to eight or thereabouts in that ballgame. So that's still a wee bit of a work in progress, but that's where the 8.5, that's how the 8.5 is budgeted. Our health benefits, plus our, sorry, our health plus our benefits is an increase of $900,000, and then the benefit reductions is because of the reductions in staff we have made. The retention for the town pension plan, every two years that this is revisited, and OPEB, other post-employment benefits, which is a smaller amount, about $12,000 or so, but the bigger contribution is to the pension plan. So mortality rates have been calculated and a lower interest rate, and at this point, that's, that is what we have to budget. We'll see what transpires, but those are huge numbers that are impacting the budget. So for special education, special education from last year to this year, we'll be planning for about 84 more students. Now, with 84 more students, I have to say that there's a wee conundrum here, that the special education budget is well within reason, but the access cost is not. So that's, that's a part of the conundrum that we have. So the special education personnel, you can see, special education expenses, and the total increase is .47. We have a reduction in special education access costs, we have a number of students who are transitioning out and don't just cross the threshold, so that becomes a, that becomes a challenge. But again, the only, the way we do this is that we budget per student, by every student that we know that's in special education, are they, are they accessing the district? Are the people entering the district? What is the access cost potential for that? And so we do that very thoroughly, comprehensively, Shirley and the staff, and so special education increases basically 1%. Outplacements, transportation, both are down, so that's, I think that would be relatively good news. Your big budget summary is this page. So salaries, the teacher efficiencies that we've realized, personnel reductions, special education, and then everything else, from bus transportation to everything else, comes out to .42. That is 1.66 in a budget. You put in the health benefits, .93, the pension and the access cost, that just gives us another conundrum, a nut to crack, which is 1.8, hence the 3.46. Just a few other things just to mention, just a couple of things about the budget, and there's nothing, there's no major initiative of school psychologists or things like that in this budget, we just can't, we just can't do those things at this point. Class sizes, as I told you, are protected, as is professional learning of staff. I've said at every meeting, our people that I meet, building the capacity of the staff here is absolutely critical. The instructional materials for the in-focused math programs are still continued, the one-to-one is still in place and has been, continue to be promoted, third, fourth, fifth, and ninth. The exploration of a better wireless technology infrastructure for student learning, I don't know if you've noticed, but sometimes it's just, it's just not readily available. We're also doing a review to potentially implement a new student management system we think would be useful. There's the addition of four assistant coaching positions to support increased student participation, avoid cutting process. You can see what those are, they're relatively small in expenditure. I've listed a couple of things at the bottom that are not included, just to give you a sense of what the hell the people asked for, like, what was the, what were some of the things? Now, you may not agree with these, I may not agree with them either, right, but these are, just to give you a wee flavor of the things that were asked for. High school P E teacher, I think some of yous probably are aware of when we had the discussion about health. High school dean of students, an ELL teacher, we're just getting up there with students. An accountant for the business manager, project lead the way. We are still supporting personnel, it's not as if it's on a health, it's just, it's just a slower version. We'll be just doing one more unit as opposed to reinvent, sort of redesigning both seventh and eighth grade. K-1 displays, they will hold off. So what are the K-1 displays? Think about them as this video board, right, the interactive board. We've had to hold off on the implementation of K in one. So what does that mean? That means the teachers still have the whiteboard interactive systems in place until we can find a way to fund it. Uniform replacement cycles. Each, each RC really was charged with going back and looking at savings, and nearly $100,000, $90,000 was realized in deferring the replacement cycle for athletics. I know, it's my understanding that it's most recently done that we've had a replacement cycle. And all honesty, I've got a replacement cycle for, for capital stuff that I've had to put on hold some things, and this is, this is a $90,000, a $90,000 saving that I think, personally, I think the district can accommodate that. that I think, personally, I think that the district can accommodate that. Library paraprofessionals, it was a desire to have more paraprofessionals in the libraries. None of those things are in place, so I just want to give the board a wee feel of some of the requests that were made. While it's not in the operating budget, the capital budget is included in the actual budget presentation, so I share some of these things with you. There's a lot of, high school has tennis courts and carpet, you can read all these, and a lot of parking lot blacktop, being blacktop, and some of the curbs being fixed, bless you. HVAC for homes to be designed, and then the district has, there's a, we're updating all the lockdown systems for school safety across all of the schools, and replace the two, there's two maintenance vehicles that are being replaced. So I hand that again, just your summary. With that, I'm happy to open up for questions, and...
So if there's any broad questions, we go through it in detail, but usually, tonight, we just let the superintendent present, but if there's any broad questions on the budget, or how we will proceed on Saturday, feel free. Anyone from the board? No? Thank you to the superintendent and your staff. We have a lot of questions for Saturday. I'm sure I'm not the only one.
Can you send some of those to me now?
But I appreciate the thoroughness, and certainly all the work that went into it, and we look forward to hearing from everybody Saturday, and we will begin our work and our due diligence. Anything else? No? All right. With that, I will move to public comment. Is there any public comments this evening? Going once. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Seeny, Mrs. Stein, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you all. See you Saturday.